And a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
No. No, I motioned.
I seconded.
And Beth seconded. And it's Tom, I can read it. It's two, you got it.
So Elizabeth, you motioned?
She motioned, I seconded.
Do you accept the nominations? Professional nominations?
The professional nominations as presented by the superintendent. And there's no discussion? So all those in favor?
So we had talked a little bit a while ago about probably having at the June meeting, having a reception for all the new staff members that we have. So we'll set that up if that's okay with you guys. And we'll probably start at quarter of six. We'll have lemonade and cookies and everybody can meet each other and you've got to face with their names.
Great. All right, so moving back to the top of the agenda, we have principals reports and Jerry has a commitment, so if you have questions, maybe we can go to Jerry's principals report first.
I have one question. And maybe I just need to say it out loud. With the changing of the schedule, moving from a five day to a six day schedule, is that, that's just like class schedule? So instead of every Monday, you would do this?
Yes.
It would be on like a six day?
Right, so we also, you know, at the elementary level, we typically had today is art day, today is music day, so now it will be today is day one, today is day. And when we miss a day, if we miss a day two for snow, the next day becomes day two. And the one reason we wanted to go to the six day schedule, which I should explain, is in grades one through four, next year we'll have six teachers at each grade level. So this gives us the ability to have common planning time for the entire grade level, which we haven't been able to do in the past. We won't be able to do that for kindergarten. Kindergarten's time will be during lunch and recess, but for all the grade levels, it will give them that common planning time.
And then a lot, so the sixth one will be, rather than every other week, they've got computer and guidance, it'll, they'll have all?
Every six days they'll have. So actually, for computer and guidance, they're getting additional time.
Right.
For the others, they've lost some time, but there's an additional block we have built in where they'll be able to get some of that made up.
Oh, okay.
By grade level. So it will work out in the end. Remember, we promised nobody would suffer because of programming for full daycare.
Right.
So we think the sixth day, and you know, middle school has had a six day schedule for years. We've checked with other elementary schools. We think, you know, kids go with the flow, so.
In all honesty, you know, talking to my kid, I think the kids will be really happy getting, you know, computer.
Yeah.
Every six days, rather than only every, you know, four, you know, every other week, so.
So I just had two comments on, and then one request for you, Jerry.
Yep.
On the upcoming and recent events.
Yes.
So I was very excited to see something new, I believe, the string concert. Is that new or has that been in the past?
Yeah, you know, we have a morning program.
Yeah.
At Jackie O Dowd Office.
Yeah.
It's kind of our curriculum enrichment. I think this is about 20 third and fourth graders.
Yeah.
So they will be doing a program on Friday, May 20th at the school. Unfortunately, I'll be missing it because I'll be at a workshop. But they're also going to present at the writing festival.
Well, that was my next comment, just to put in a plug for the writing festival coming up next week.
Yep, and I think I've got a couple of two grades there.
It's always a tremendous event.
That's incredible.
Yeah, so they, I apologize, I'm not 100% certain of when they're presenting. I think we've sent it out, we'll send it out again.
Okay.
And I don't think it'll be all of the children, but it will be some of them. And the hope is to particularly build awareness with current second graders who are going into third grade, that this will be available to them.
That's great.
I think it's right after school. I don't remember.
I think it, I think you're right. I think it's so the kids don't have to go home necessarily.
Yeah, it's at like, you know, 3:00, 3:30-ish until?
Enough time for Jackie to get there and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we are excited about that.
Yeah.
You know, that's been great. The middle school has something going on too. I think we though have the highest number of kids.
That's true.
Third and fourth grade.
And then I just also wanted to ask if you could just briefly touch on Liz Alexakos' potential honor or already honor?
Yep, so Liz Alexakos, you know, was a nominee for New Hampshire 2017 Teacher of the Year. She's made it to what they call the semifinalist round. We've got a letter, we didn't really get the number of people who have made it to that level. It's typically six to eight people who go to that level. So on June 6th, we'll have a visiting team of judges who will come to Wilkins. One of the things they'll do is observe Liz teaching a lesson. It's a lesson of her choice. I'm sure you're all surprised when I tell you Liz has already designed her lesson and continues to modify it. We'll also have groups of students, current and past, who will meet with the judges. Parents, we're also going to collect letters from people who aren't able to come, but who would like to contribute, so we can have a binder there that the judges can look at while they're having lunch.
That's great.
So Liz, Liz has really been quite humble about the whole process, but we're very excited for her, and we know many of the students are. And ironically, we've mentioned the Carter Tough Blood Drive that we're also having June 1st, and you know, Liz has been instrumental in organizing that also. That was a day, by the way, that they originally offered us, for Liz to have her teacher observation. And I just said the sixth would be preferable, and kept my fingers crossed, and they did give us the sixth. So we're all looking forward to it. There will be staff members speaking on Liz's behalf. We're thrilled to have you and Peter come. I'll speak on her behalf. Her current class is very excited about it.
Sure.
Children she has right now are particularly thrilled. But there are certainly other students throughout the school who have commented on it. But she's been quite humble. But I think the fact that she's already got her lesson ready to go. We've kept our fingers crossed it's not 95 degrees on June 6th.
Right. Well, whatever the outcome, she's obviously representing the district very well.
She is. She's doing a great job. I appreciate it. And that's how she looks at it. She looks at it as she, she is putting her best foot forward to represent the school and the community.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And also, it looks like Liz Valencourt has.
Yep.
Has done something pretty great in her classroom.
Yeah, Liz Valencourt, all of her children submitted writing pieces to the New Hampshire, New Hampshire Public Television Channel Writers Contest. Every single child in the room submitted a piece. And three of the children received honorable mention.
That's great.
That's great.
And I believe, and I actually know, you can go to their webpage and you can see different samples of writing that the kids have done. So they, again, were very excited. We've recognized them in a small way for the class. You know, we've given them a certificate and.
Yeah.
But I think it's impressive that every kid contributed to it and that three of them got recognition.
Yeah, that's great.
So they're pretty excited.
Thank her.
Very, just really quick, I just wanted, you know, I saw that the music concert was in there. I went to the first grade one. I have got to say, the skill that man has in corralling 121 first grade students, and actually, every single kid out there was having a blast. They all participated, there was no, you know, holdouts. You know, the choreography that he did, they all had it and enjoyed it, and he did great. I'm really impressed.
He is, he is a very talented individual and.
He is.
Mr. Award.
It is amazing.
We gotta set his name. Oh, Mr. Award, yes.
We even had, you know, a nosebleed in that during the show.
Yo, I know.
Which, the show went on, the show kept going.
Yep.
We've had, yeah.
Poor kid.
I know. I think, yeah, I think we did have pretty impressive attendance there.
Yeah.
You know, there's usually a few kids who are out during the day. I think we only had one child who didn't attend.
Yep. Yeah, it was wonderful.
Yep. I thought my wife would be so shocked.
Thank you, Paul, for helping.
Yeah.
Helping him on his way.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, moving on to.
I'll just pass around and let you look at the strings that was mentioned last night, our strings that did work and the picture that falls out.
Oh, great.
The strings performed in between.
Yeah.
I thought you wanted to see that.
Absolutely.
Great, very exciting.
So moving on to the middle school. Does anyone have questions for Porter? Or comments?
I didn't have any questions. Some cool things coming up though.
Yeah.
So not really question as much as a comment, but some cool activities, upcoming events and such.
So I see in here the eighth grade ASPEC testing is happening in the next couple weeks.
Yes.
There's sixth grade too, right? Being finished now.
They're done.
So they did do it.
We have that grade left. It's, you can only imagine how much it is to, these are, these are adaptive tests that require technology. And so when you have your entire school taking these tests, it's something, it really is. It requires such flexibility with the staff, and they really need to be recognized for that, because people way back at the beginning of the year, planning out their units and things, say, okay, I'm going to need a wireless card, I'm going to need the laptop for, you know, this time. And then when it gets closer to our actual windows and we find them, they have to swap and other people have grabbed other weeks. And so a lot of flexibility, and they need to be recognized for that.
More of the flow of it and everything went well and?
Yes, yes. They're getting better, and the kids are getting, the kids are getting better. That's really, the best part of it is that they're getting used to it, they're getting used to the performance assessment pieces, so I'm very pleased. And I don't want to say it went fallacy, it went very well, and it was getting better rather.
So, and then I see we have a student who received a national award.
Jay Griffin, yes.
In scholastic art.
Yes, and I, she's very talented. We've been blessed over the years, as you know, with some really talented artists. And in this particular case, she came in to show me the medal she's got. It's a giant silver medal that she received at the national level, which is just incredible. And she's a great kid, as they all are. We just, we're blessed. And again, that goes to the tribute, not only to the students themselves, but the teachers in the program, all the way up from your art in the elementary. As Peter said many times, they don't get here, they don't become an artist in the eighth grade. They just get nurtured, and so we're very, we're very blessed.
And I just had one other question on the student user fees.
Yes, I was going to bring that up.
Middle school, okay.
Last year I met with Peter, a year ago, over a year ago, we met to talk about the potential of raising user fees as a means of helping us to support the program. As it is right now, I'm sure many of you know, my goal someday would be not to have to be at dances every three weeks, you know, raising money for our programs. Over the years, we, at one time, we were doing them every two weeks. And this year, we've gone to one a month. That money all goes back into the student activity to help support, for instance, the mats. There's been a tremendous amount of things. Mats cost you $10,000. Those were purchased by our fundraising, not by taxpayer money. Lots and lots of it, the money goes back to. By raising the user fee, I think it's time to do it. When we talked last year, it was a little late. I actually put it in a report last year that I'd like to talk about it, and then I didn't. That's on me. And then when I talked to Peter, we said, let's wait next year, we can, we can survive. But we're getting very, very close with the user fees and that to, to not breaking even now. Everything's going up, us, costs being tournaments and things. And I, so Peter had said, let's talk with you present. I mean, it's really not, I don't know, has we really asked the board for it, because I don't know if we ever asked the board before, but I'd like to raise it to $75 or $80. The high school is still at 100 minimum for all activities and sports, so we're not asking that. And our season is as long.
Yeah.
And the number of games that the JV plays, we actually outnumber the JVs, if you are a JV team. So they're certainly getting a good bang for the buck. Anybody who's had a child in AAU knows that you can pay in the thousands for an AAU team. So I would like to just let you know that that will be my plan, and I need to, if you have objections to it, I need to know, because we'll be putting that into our summer information that we send home. And I, you know, and again, if there's, if there's issue, we can certainly talk about it.
Well, I know you also include if there's a family with a particular hardship, then we work with that, so.
Always, yeah.
And we make that well known.
Right.
Yes. Any questions on that? I know it's.
I think it makes sense.
I think it, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
I see an update here on the basketball court.
Oh, I wish I, I wish I, the basketball court should be ready. We did have to wait a little bit longer, because they, trust me, you should see the craziness of the B and all that. It's just a sort of plastic locked area, the vented lock. But what's great about it is that the floor, when they're going to be putting the machines on to do the cleaning, they, they said, give another week of a curing, and for another week, I'm willing to do it, because then we know the weight of those heavy machines, when they roll across it, there'll be no issues with the sealant and all that. So I've been in there and taken a look at it. It is incredible, wait till you see it. It is just, it's wow. I wish I was back coaching again, you know. But it's, so as soon as we can, I would say probably, we're shooting for maybe the first week of June, we'll let everybody know, we'll let, the kids are all waiting. We'll probably let everybody come down, take a look at it grade by grade for it, but we'll tell them to stay off the floor.
Yeah.
But it is beautiful. It really is.
And it's been going okay with classes, the weather's been, been fine, so.
Yes, it has, and again, flexibility. Jim and Lindsay Toomey and Tim Lambrou have been in the cafeteria having classes, and they've been in classrooms having classes. And it's kind of funny, you look and they're still playing these frisbee games and stuff, and you're going, wow, they're doing it in the littlest places that they can to get it going. And then the weather's been great, so we'll be outside.
Great.
If you remember, Betty couldn't be here tonight, but you remember the cost of cleaning she talked about last time? Because there was an awful lot of cleaning that needed to be done based on what they did prior to putting the floor down. So the cost of that would have been $17,000 to clean that. She wanted to work with the company to see if we could get that cost down. And that would be from ceiling to all the walls, floors, everything would be clean before. So thanks to her great effort, we are, we'll be paying $3,000 rather than the 17.
Oh, my gosh.
She's, and the other thing too is. The company also was equally understanding and worked with her. Some companies would have said, you know, we're out of here. And I think that we need to make sure that we, they say thank you to them too. So they, they had an idea of how to do that. They work with a lot of other companies, like cleaning companies like Raytheon, they clean Raytheon, that kind of thing. So we, $3,000 will take. She mentioned that to me this afternoon, but if you see her, thank her, because that's quite a price.
Yeah, we'll have a clean. Fantastic surprise.
Yes.
Please extend our thanks.
Yes, please.
We like surprises for you that are good ones.
And to the credit of the company too, Peter, that did the floor.
Yeah.
When you see it, you will not believe the paint, the lines, the different colors that accent the different sports. It is just, it is unbelievable, you know, it looks like nothing I've seen. And it looks like a college, a collegiate gymnasium, it really does.
Did you put the eagle back in the center, or what'd you do there?
I'm going to let you see it, you're going to love it, okay?
Did you do something? What are you talking about?
Jim, it's me going like this. I started the basketball program, I got to get something. I don't want it to be the memorial gym, okay? It's a little premature. No, you're going to love it. It's an eagle, but it is like, nothing like the other one. It is.
I said we like to give you surprises, right?
I almost looked to walk in and see that.
Maybe we can have our next board meeting over there.
We'll get the pictures on the web as soon as they, as soon as they're there, we'll get them as soon as we get them.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
We can let you know when it's open, you just go ahead and take a look.
Yeah, I do want to go over.
Thanks for letting us know about the cost issue.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, it's all due to her. It was to Betty's skill, so kudos to her.
We're getting there, folks, we're getting there. Yeah, we are getting there.
Okay, so committee reports, I think we probably want to hold off on that unless anyone has anything pressing. Do you have?
Should I talk about advanced or no, Peter?
Well, I could talk about streamlined.
You absolutely could. We're going to be talking about next Thursday at the SAU board meeting. We'll talk a little bit about, a lot about strategic plan, where the, more importantly, where the streamlined committee is, because they're the one that has this timeframe. Maggie's on that committee, so thank you for being on that. We have some recommendations from them. We have an advertisement in the paper to connect to anybody that's interested in joining one of those committees that we talked about, so we'll know that.
Okay.
So certainly, meeting to meeting, you certainly can.
I think the only, I think the only thing that, the only thing I'll say, just so everybody, well, you were at the meeting too, I think, Porter, right?
Not last night.
For the advanced committee, were you there?
Not last night.
No. Just so the rest of you guys know, is that at the advanced, last advanced committee, advanced meeting subcommittee, I should say, we looked at the six strategic priorities that are part of that, that committee. The one at the top was kindergarten. And so we had come to a place where we felt like this is, you know, like this is like 98% completed, you know, or almost virtually 100% completed. So we were, we were saying, okay, we need to move on, what's next? Well, with five other strategic priorities, we said, boy, you know, it's like, you can't do everything all at once, you don't have enough resources, you don't have enough time. Eventually, you'd like to get there, but we need to prioritize. So we came out of that committee meeting saying that we were going to prioritize the assessment piece and the STEM piece, because we felt like it would be better, how do I say this? We felt like it would be better to allocate all of the resources we have to dedicate to making sure those get done and get done right, before we went on to the other strategic priorities. Not that the other strategic priorities are not important, it was just a matter of prioritization. So that was the recommendation coming out of that committee. We even had a little bit of a, this is not set in stone, but we had, we had talked about having, you know, deadlines for a couple of those things, like what are reasonable deadlines? And we came out of there with, with some dates that, I suppose we could talk more about the SAU, but that we felt were not overly aggressive, but reasonable, but not have to wait, you know, five years to get them done essentially. So I feel really good about where we.
Christine's on that.
Where we came on there. Yeah, I'm sorry, you want to add, did they encapsulate that the right way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the beauty of the staging, for the people at home too, with the pillars that we have and all the initiatives under each pillar, to try and look at each one and where are we with those. And we have five years, three to five years to complete this work, and we can't do it all in one year. There are budgetary complications, and I say complications, as we go forward. So some of those things are going to be put off, measured, and strategically looked at in different years, in different segments. So it sounds like there was a really good meeting. I did meet with, I met with David and a few others at committee, and talked with Christine, so.
Yeah, the STEM, the assessment and the STEM pieces are, we feel are very, very important to the school system, so.
Now, Christine, the assessment portion of it, that's pretty much going to be taken care of by the new committee, right? Or is there more on top of that?
We had an interesting discussion about that last time. So there are actually two different initiatives around assessment.
Okay.
There's one in the advanced pillar, which is around performance assessment, and that's really tied closely with our PES work. There's another initiative in the Unite group, which is actually Jerry's group. And that initiative is around creating a common reporting system based on standards, and that's what's going to come out of the assessment, grading, and reporting committee.
Okay.
Yeah, there's convergence here among, among a lot of these strategic priorities, and so we.
It's a different kind of assessment than basically.
Yeah, we talked about how, you know, David Chen actually brought the wonder, you know, should it have been one initiative and together? But we said, you know, separating them almost draws more attention to each one as a separate entity, while they, there's going to be a lot of points of intersection along the way. It's important to almost think of them as two separate timelines that intersect.
I think so.
Because they're not the same.
Yep.
And just speaking briefly first, streamline, and Peter spoke of that, you know, we've met, Maggie's in our audience, and there'll be a presentation at the SAU board meeting next week with more information, but we are looking at consolidation models. So that's the first piece, and then there will be the formal committee that is being appointed by the town moderators in Amherst and Mount Vernon, who will then take over that work that the streamlined committee has been working on, the consolidation piece of it.
But the streamlined task force will be very important with that work more, you've done all the work.
Yeah.
And Betty's done a lot of that too, so.
Yeah.
Very important work to inform that, those two committees.
Right. Yep, so, so if people are more interested in that, there'll be a presentation at the SAU board meeting next week, so. Anybody else? Committee reports? No? Okay.
Trying to make the SAU board meeting really exciting.
Yeah.
People really want to go.
Make it great again. Have it at Georgia's.
So, public comment? Do we have anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Maggie? Come on. Come on up.
We missed you at the last meeting.
My daughter's getting married, I'm multitasking. So this is just a general comment, because I looked at the agenda before I came tonight, and I have no idea what gender equality is about. I don't know if it's about Obama's requirements for the school. So my comment is, could public comment be later in the meeting? So that if something comes up during the meeting I want to comment on, I can comment on it this, today, rather than waiting a month to comment on something that's in the agenda? Because I have no idea what that's about. You do, because you get an expanded, you know, agenda. I only see that one page on the internet, so.
Can I tell her what it's about, what I think it's about?
Well, we'll, we'll find that.
I might have you on the spot.
But I'm just raising, I'm raising that as an example to ask about the possibility of moving public comment later in the meeting, so that if something comes up during the meeting that the public would like to comment on, that we'd have that, unless, unless there's some other way to say, would anyone in the public like to comment about what happened during the meeting?
Right, but like, or adding another public comment section, so that in case there's people that have something to say that have nothing to do with it.
I understand that, I understand that.
It's not necessarily about Obama, that's why.
Okay, well, yeah, that's.
Yeah, or the guidance that came out, yeah.
No, but I, just the sequence.
I understand. You use that as an example.
I'm using it as an example, but the sequencing, because, you know, you might, which came up with the, I don't know how we handled it, but it came up with the flooring for the basketball court, and I raised it. I didn't know about it until I came to that meeting.
Oh, okay.
And then I got up to talk about it, but.
That's good input. We're so used to doing topics, you know, and.
Yeah, and I know, and that's probably a standard format, but I'm.
We're going to.
Question.
Thank you.
Can we change the format?
Yeah, so thank you. So maybe we can talk about that at some point and think about it and make a recommendation on whether to do that.
There are, we've taught, we went to the new school board meeting, you know, training session a couple of weeks ago, and there are some that have it at the end or have two options for it.
They have two options, yeah.
Yeah, so they'll do it in the beginning for people that don't really want to talk about the topics, but want to get in and out, you know, whatever.
That's actually a good idea.
And then there's, does anybody have anything to say about what was talked about today?
That's a good idea.
Let me, so in lieu of this, if it's okay with the board, I'll put this, because we want to have, of the three districts, what's good for one might be good for the other. I'm going to put this on the SAU agenda.
That sounds like a good idea.
So we can have a brief discussion with everybody there next Thursday.
That's a good idea.
Another good reason to come to the meeting.
Yes.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, absolutely.
Makes sense.
Great. Thank you, Maggie. Okay, next up, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Consent agenda?
That's right.
Okay. Any discussion?
I need to pull the minutes.
You need to pull the minutes?
Yeah, small error.
Okay. So.
Need to see here, make sure, yep.
Make a motion to prove the rest, or you can wait for this correction and prove the.
Is it a small correction?
Very small.
So that's probably that.
Is it a letter typo? What is it?
Yeah, the typo.
So let us know what it is, we'll change it.
Okay. Line nine, it's Jim Manning, vice chair and vice president.
I just thought you were running for higher.
I appreciate the promotion, but.
And this is, I got this from the SAU website. On some of the, on the, where the boards are listed, some of them say vice president.
Do they?
Yes.
Okay.
So online, now I swear to God, online board, it'll like, I'm just giving an example, some say vice chair, some say vice president, so.
So wait, does it say president and chair? Or like, is it just the vice?
I think I should salute.
I was kind of like, hey. But it needs to change.
Yeah, so.
We will, we will check that out, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, so.
Mr. Vice President.
So the motion to, yeah, the motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Passes? Okay, now we're down to discussion items, gender equity, and Christine Landwell has a brief presentation for us.
Maybe.
Do you have the mouse or?
Do you need like one of those remote clickers?
Yeah, we should, we need to buy, I really do.
I have a, I have a remote.
The, I have one too. The problem is, it's in as a PDF, not as a PowerPoint, so you can't.
Oh.
Okay.
Do you want to give some perspective before Christine starts, like how we got here?
Yeah.
Possibly.
So we wanted to start a conversation about gender equity within our district in terms of academic opportunities and performance, social and emotional opportunities and performance, and this is meant as a beginning to this conversation and really a framework, and tonight's presentation focuses solely on the academic piece, and we wanted to start that so that the board could have an initial framework and then think about where we want this conversation and if there are directives from the board to the administration on things that we want to take a look at in terms of gender equity. So, does that?
Perfect, yes, thank you.
All right.
So to frame our discussion, you know, this really is a discussion, but I did want to share with you just some information that I was able to find nationally, just to frame and provide us that perspective. So this national view, there's a report called Gender Equity in Education. It's put out by the U.S. Census Bureau, and it's civil rights data collection, and it's done every 10 years, so this is from the 2010 census. This isn't every school in the country. They basically take a representative sample from all of the data that they receive, which is fairly typical.
So census data, you're saying, right?
Yes, yeah, and reporting data from schools. So the first thing is enrollment by gender, pre-K to higher education, and this is really interesting. There are actually less females than males in pre-kindergarten than when we get to elementary and secondary school. It's pretty equal. And then higher education, much more females in higher education, which is very interesting. And so it's 57% of students in higher ed are women. And interestingly, when you look at students going for a master's degree, it's 62.6% are females. So very interesting information as far as where our females show up in education. Another note on here, degrees and certificates in STEM fields, it's, over the past 10 to 15 years, it has increased about, you know, five to six percent. More women are getting degrees in STEM fields, but that it's still only 31% of degrees and certificates in STEM fields were earned by women. So while we have more women in higher education, less certainly in STEM fields. And then looking at Algebra I enrollment, so that's kind of big picture, then looking at some kind of course information, drilling down to the school level, and again, this is a national view, Algebra I enrollment by grade, pretty similar between girls and boys, so looking at what grade levels they actually enroll in Algebra I. I don't know what our data would look like. We haven't done that analysis in the past, and we certainly could look, for example, at our Compacted Common Core course, which essentially starts Algebra early for those students in our accelerated math program. But interesting information, but pretty similar between boys and girls. Looking at science courses, I was really surprised by this. Pretty equal for total enrollment between boys and girls in science courses. Biology, even, pretty even. Chemistry as well, it was physics that girls were underrepresented in, which I would expect, but I was surprised by the chemistry piece. One of the reasons that might be is because chemistry is often taken in the junior year, and with certain high school requirements around science, it might be more even because of what high schools are requiring, where physics is often senior year, and there's a little bit more flexibility with courses by the time you get to your senior year. So that could be the reason, but just a guess. Again, it's a national picture, so it's hard to know. And again, we could certainly dig into our data in that area to see if it's, it's similar. High school math courses, I was really surprised by this, very even, especially the calculus piece. But interestingly, if you go to the next slide, Advanced Placement Access and Success, this was very interesting data, so it doesn't follow that enrollment in high school courses. So when we're actually looking at, say, you know, like an AP Calculus course, girls certainly are underrepresented. So girls are outnumbering boys in enrollment in AP Science or AP Foreign Language, but looking at AP Mathematics, boys have consistently outnumbered girls by a pretty, so it's a, the student sample, the sample in here is, there's a few million students in this sample. So it's not, you know, 10,000 when you're looking at, you know, 1 to 2 million students isn't huge, but they're certainly, they're being outnumbered. Boys take AP tests and pass AP tests at a higher rate than girls. So a few more boys are taking the AP exam, and they're passing at slightly higher rates too. And again, you know, I don't know what our picture looks like here at South Heagan, and again, we're feeding into South Heagan, so it could be, you know, interesting data for us to examine.
So if I heard this correctly, if I'm reading this right, you're saying that more boys are taking AP, or more girls are taking AP courses, but more boys are passing AP tests?
So the first bullet is just talking about a few of the AP courses that girls are outnumbering boys in, and it didn't list all of the AP courses. But in looking at the AP Math courses, boys are outnumbering girls, where the AP Science and AP Foreign Language girls are outnumbering boys.
But it even sounds like of, of the ones that are enrolled, more boys are taking the tests than the girls.
Yes.
And of that, a higher percentage are passing.
Yes, because it's not a requirement to take the test.
Right.
And it's an even larger percentage of boys are passing than what is actually taking the test. If that, like, 5% more boys are passing them, whereas only 3% more are taking it. So granted, it's 2%, but it's still an interesting difference.
Yeah, I was surprised by this.
Yep.
And again, it might not be consistent with what we experience here, but it's interesting to see the national trends so that we can then look at our own trends to see if, how they compare nationally.
The AP Science part surprises me. Like, I would have expected to see it different, but.
Yes, yeah. And then high school sports, and again, I certainly have a wonder, you know, this is nationally, but girls represented 42% of athletics participants and 49% of enrollment in schools. So, you know, obviously, girls aren't participating as often in sports. And 35% of the schools offering these athletic programs were reporting a gap of 10 percentage points or more between the percentage of girls enrolled and the percentage of athletes who are girls. And interesting, the last one, I thought was very interesting, 57% of schools offer fewer athletic teams for girls than for boys. And again, that's nationally.
Is it against Title I?
Um, not that.
Or is that just because you don't have them?
No, so you, if you don't offer it for girls, then you have to allow them to participate in the boys.
Right.
So, but you don't have to offer it.
Okay, but you have to, okay.
So for example, if you had a boys soccer team and didn't have a girls soccer team, as long as the girls were allowed to join the boys team, that's okay.
Okay.
So that's kind of a national view, and that was much of what I could dig up, and that's what the census data reports showed. So I did want to start our conversation by digging into our assessment data, because in looking at gender equity, you do want to see, you know, in many different areas, you know, are we seeing any big gaps? So the assessment data is an important place to at least start. I started with our NIWA data and looked at our fall 2015 mean grit scores, and I disaggregated them by gender. And in looking at them, there's only a few points difference in most places between males and females. So nothing significant popped up. The largest difference is, happens to be in eighth grade in reading between males and females. So females are performing a little bit higher than the males by, you know, more than just a few points. And that would be representative, again, this is fall data, so representative of seventh grade instruction. Is this, you know, you'd have to, I'd have to look back at multiple years to see, is this something with this one cohort? Is this something that typically happens when we're getting into the seventh or eighth grade years? So, you know, deeper analysis of a few years worth of data which we have.
I'd be interested, I'd be interested to see the ninth grade difference as well, to see if it's because of, as they get older, it's.
Right.
The, for whatever reason.
And I can certainly add the ninth grade data, but also dig in more to see if there's any sort of trend or gap, if I can go back a few years.
Yep.
It's really interesting to see the, you know, one year, it's, you know, a couple points higher on one side, but the next year it switches.
Yeah.
But they are, really, it's just a couple.
Yeah, and three points isn't really significant, but, and I think that's why we're seeing flip flops, because it's not anything hugely significant. But again, this doesn't get at necessarily student experience or their perception. One other thing I wanted to share, I did speak with Tripod, which is the organization we work with on the student surveys that we've been field testing this year, and they are willing to run an analysis and disaggregate our student perception data from surveys for us. I don't think it's worthwhile this year because we were just field testing and we have such a small population to work with. I don't think it's going to be very meaningful because it wouldn't really give us a full school picture, but that's something that they definitely can do for us. They are looking at some advanced reporting capabilities, and in the future, we may be able to do it ourselves and get that data, disaggregate it.
Wow.
But for now, we're not able to disaggregate it. We would have to, you know, pay them for that additional service at this point. But they anticipate it may even be as early as next year that we would be able to have the capability to disaggregate the data ourselves to, to look at that picture and see.
Christine, when we get our Sback results, our Smarter Balanced results, we will be able to disaggregate them as well, and that might be an interesting other piece to look out to.
In terms of the academic.
So the reason I didn't pull Smarter Balanced is because I only have the data from last year, which was the first year of data. The other thing is, for some reason, I can't find anywhere what the state results are disaggregated by gender. Typically, the state does that and they post it. They've done that for years with NECAP, and each year, when we do our Title I application, we have to show if we have any gaps between, for example, IEP and non-IEP, between male and female. So we have to run this analysis when we apply for federal funds to show what gaps we might have and how we're addressing those gaps. For the past few years, when I've done this report, nothing came up on NECAP, but we didn't have the Smarter Balanced state results to be able to compare what our results look like. So for example, if we saw a big fluctuation one year, for example, where males were outperforming females or females were outperforming males, I'd need to look at the state results to see, is that consistent across the state? Was there something about the assessment? Is it inconsistent with it? So because I don't have that state data, it's, I was worried it could be, you know, we might be seeing red flags that aren't really red flags.
Okay.
So.
Can we request them from the state?
Probably, you know, that's certainly something I can look into. I would think that data would be readily available, but, you know, I don't know why they hadn't put it on their website. So, in the past, they have, and I couldn't find it anywhere.
Can you give me an example of how we would use Tripod to look for, you know, any potential gender inequities, and then how we would then disaggregate that data to make inference?
So the way Tripod writes each of their questions, students agree strongly, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, so it's a five-point Likert scale. And what they would do for us is actually separate males from females and give us every single question, and what percentage of students answered that favorably, and what percentage of students, you know, didn't answer it favorably. So if we're seeing a certain question, for example, there's a question that's part of care that says something like, my, my teacher shows care, shows she cares, he or she cares about me, for example. So if we saw, if we looked at that question, and, you know, 73% of females were reporting favorably to that question, and only 37% of males were reporting favorably, we know we have, that that are, that our students are perceiving something important for us to dig into. So, you know, I, they couldn't provide an example. I don't know that they've done this analysis for any school district before, but they, you know, they contacted their research team to make sure they could run that analysis and that they could produce a report for us. So it would probably be, they wouldn't be able, I don't know if they could norm the results. The nice thing about Tripod is that they then adjust the report out, they give you your raw report out, but then they also put you on a scale based on norms. I don't know if they have norms or not, whether we get norm data or just the raw percentages, but either way, it would help us.
And it would inform us for PD for staff. We're seeing that teachers, you know, with the Tripod results, have those skewed percentages. We'd want to make sure we did something about it. So starting this conversation is a good thing for many reasons, and frankly, we didn't know where to start. We wanted just to bring some preliminary information that we could begin the conversation about gender equity.
Are there any other important areas to, we could look at beyond gender and the Tripod data, like, could you look at students on an IEP, level 504, who are enrolled in AP classes, that are also boys, are also men, also women, whatever, and be able to get to that level of granularity? And even if we could, would it be useful?
So Tripod tries to protect student confidentiality, so students actually log in with a random ID that's, literally, the teacher gets these cards, cuts them up, and students randomly get the card, and it has a username and a password, and they're just a random sequence of letters and numbers. So the only identifiable information in the survey is what the student has reported out. So a student would say they're male or they're female, but they don't report out that they're on an IEP or not on an IEP. So unfortunately, with Tripod, because you're protecting that student confidentiality, you're limited in the ways you could disaggregate the data.
I could see how it would be helpful though, in that if you have a disproportionate number, for example, of students who are on an IEP that say their students, their teachers don't listen to them, or whatever, it would be, I'm not saying that that would be the case, I'm just, or even, but you know what I mean?
They would say, if you teach two.
Well, maybe, it could be the opposite.
Or a higher percentage, yeah.
I don't know, it could be, who knows, who knows what could come out of that data, but that's, I guess where I'm getting at is that's, I don't know, I, I come from a data-rich world, and so you come into a school system, it's data-poor. It's very difficult to make not only strategic but tactical decisions in a school system without robust data analysis. And I'm just trying to think of, yeah, I mean, really, like, at work, I can slice data like 6,000 different ways, it's almost like too much. But here, it's not enough, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, the only way we would be able to do that is that we could recreate, you know, a Tripod survey essentially, and use Survey Monkey, and have students actually enter their names, and then we can kind of merge, it'd be a little extra work on our end, and we wouldn't have normed results, but we would, and if we wanted to do a representative sample, you know, pull a group of IEP and non-IEP students and have them report out, we could.
Okay.
I don't know, yeah.
Something about that is, but, you know, our, our goal here is to kind of raise the questions and start the conversation, not necessarily solution or anything.
Right.
So I think if you raise an important point about what other data could we reach out to, what other data can we collect, and what's useful and what isn't. Just because we can do a thing doesn't mean we necessarily should do a thing. If it's not going to give us, give us feedback information, we can use.
If it's not going to give us, give us feed information we can use.
Are we able to pick what the questions are?
No, so Tripod has done deep research, and they're in their eighteenth version of the survey. And they've, they've very carefully crafted those questions, where there's multiple questions to all feed into one certain topic, and there's those seven different topics. You can, I believe you can ask Tripod to add questions to your survey, and, you know, for an additional fee, I believe that they can do that.
Because maybe we can just, I don't, can we just simply say, are, you know, do you have?
Most students at the lower grades wouldn't be able to answer that question. They don't know that they have an IEP.
Yeah.
And those that do might not know it in those terms, you know. I don't, Maggie, do you have any other? Because a child might not, and then they might feel uncomfortable answering that, you know, a question about
Oh, middle-aged kiddos, they would not know because we would tell them. That's the discretion of the parents. Once kids turn fourteen, that we are always trying to involve them in that process. But again, until they reach sixty, it's really up to the parents. When they reach sixty, we have to.
Okay.
So, I think, you know, what we're, why we've started this conversation is to see if there are, first of all, if there's data that we can gather, and if we want to, if we want to gather that data. And then based on that, are there things that we can look to do to, to really maximize every student's learning experience? And not have, and look, are there gender biases in terms of student experience within the classroom? And I guess we don't really have the answer to that, so first, we would need to seek that information, and then, based on that, determine if there are efforts that, that we want to employ to ensure that every student has the same experience and opportunities. So that's really what we're talking about doing, so.
And gender biases may be in, like, we probably have some areas we can point to, like, we've talked before about girls in STEM, right? Girls being underrepresented in STEM. We've talked before about boys being underrepresented in the honor roll and National Honor Society, those types of things. So, I don't know if we look to those areas first, or, or what we did.
I think, I think also, talking to our kids would be helpful. And surveying our present students, if we have a question like that, so, National Honor Society, why are you not, you know, you have all these, why are you not doing that? There's a lot of reasons we'd probably find out. And I think talking to our students is much, we're going to get some rich data, I think, from them. The other thing we're doing this summer, for the first time, we're going to have some interns in our SAU office from colleges, so we're going to try and look at if there's research that we want to do, things like that, that we have people that can do that. Because otherwise, it's going to end up with the lady at the right of me all the way down the road here.
I know, she's already got talent on her plate.
So, I think this will help. So, so this meeting and next meeting, if it's okay with everyone, too, I want to keep it alive. The conversation is a good one, and we can talk about it at next time as well. And if we had a short number of research topics we want to look at in this area, we could have somebody really looking at the data that we could present in the fall or something. So, it's very worthy, I think, of that kind of thing. So that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking. And also, getting our students involved in questions about, for example, video games and boys, would they rather do that than be on the National Honor Society? We have to ask those questions because some of it is societal, not just academic, so that might help us as well. So I hope that makes sense, and we could do some of that work in the summertime.
Yeah.
And I don't know what other data we pull. You know, we could look at the compact to common core numbers over the past few years. Are girls and boys evenly represented? You know, off the top of my head, I think it's fairly close, that, you know, I've worked with those lists for the past few years, but I haven't counted. So, certainly, that's easy to pull. So that's something that we could look at. You know, if we were interested in that, and I can dig a little bit deeper into the NIWA data, to see if there are any, you know, you know, if you look at multi-years, sometimes things flag. I don't know if we want to look at sports, or percentage of students who are involved in a sport, and how, you know, percentage involved in one, two, or three sports a year, or numbers of teams or anything like that. I mean, we can, you know, this national data, I felt like was really interesting, but I don't know how much applies to us, but it can be the start for what we felt strongly about digging into. But I think it depends on where your questions are, which is kind of what Peter was saying. You know, if you have a questions, a specific question around National Honor Society, then what data do we need to pull?
I think we definitely need to look at sports, because if you're looking at, I don't know, let's just say, this is a hypothetical, also have to be careful, but if you say, okay, we're seeing more girls involved in the art show, honoring the art show and on National Honor Society, could that be because they're not involved in sports? The boys are involved in not only sports, but multiple sports, and like, my boys are involved in club sports, too. So, I mean, I know there's a lot of girls in town who do that as well, a lot, but I just don't know. But we don't, we just don't know. And that's, that's the thing, too, is that, so I guess one of my questions, Peter, is, is there, we originally wrote Streamline as part of the strategic plan? There was a major driver for why we had Streamline, but then, as we went back and thought about it, in a different way, we thought that Streamline could also have a lot more to do with efficiency and data analytics and those types of things. So is data analytics still a part of the Streamline? Still, is still a strategic pillar in Streamline?
Still an initiative.
Or still initiative and a pillar?
Yes.
But the accelerated piece here, and I'm looking at Maggie, but accelerated piece is really to get to next March. So we have a lot to do between now and next March, because what we want to do is put something on the warrant that says to citizens of Mount Vernon and Amherst, are you interested in, would you vote for going to one district? Or, in either case, I think we're coming down with two or three options for voters. Still there?
Yeah.
But it's, as you said earlier, too, we can't do it all the same and all together and all at once, but it's still there. I think the analytics, that was, you know, conversations we had at the board were very rich about that whole thing. So, this is a fascinating topic, and I also think that, so for the June meeting, I'd be interested to say, why don't we all come back with something, do a little bit of research on our own to talk about gender equity? I would ask people at home if they have something they'd like us to look at or be involved with, to email me, and I can put that together as well. So, it's an interesting topic, and we look at our kids today, and we should probably do a retrospective to nineteen fifty. What did that look like? It's certainly going to look differently, but there are a lot of similarities. When you look at high schools, there are kids that would love to be on the field, but they have to work. There are lots of cultural things we're going to have to look at, too. So, I'm fascinated by just the topic, you know, we're going to find a lot of things that we're going to talk about. So, I hope that helps as we continue the conversation, and then come up with some ideas that we want to, like, really stick with.
All right. Okay. Moving on to summer curriculum update, and I believe Christine is on deck again. This isn't in your packet. I was just going to speak to it, but then I thought it was probably easier if you had something in front of you, especially if you wanted to jot anything down. And this is the most up-to-date, this is still a work in progress. So the first item is our Summer Literacy Institute for Curriculum Development. This is a similar institute to what we had last year. We are holding it right after, the week after school ends, so June twentieth through the twenty-third, which is four days. We have grades one through eight involved in this, and it is our literacy teachers, so our English and Language Arts teachers. We do have twenty-five teachers that are interested in participating, and we are able to fund all of those who are interested. We're exclusively using our Title II-A funds, which is great, so we're not using the operating budget. I was able to apply for a redistribution grant through Title II-A and did receive a significant amount of funding, which is really exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you say how much? Because it is
Yeah, thirty thousand dollars additional funding.
That's great. Thank you, Christine.
Yeah, so it was exciting. So with this, we will continue our work with our units and our curriculum frameworks, but a deeper focus on alignment to standards. So, last year, we were really drafting units and determining what those will look like for, you know, implementation this year. And now that we've been through a year, we've been doing a lot of playing around and tweaking and changing throughout the year, but it's really the time to reflect on our units. Teachers know some of the changes they already want to make, or some new units they actually want to bring in. So they're really going to spend time revising their units and refining the alignment to standards. Some groups, groups might be looking deeply at assessment and some of their performance assessments and alignment to the performance assessment and to the unit. We will also be rolling out the new model K-eight competencies. So, we had a few teachers work with the New Hampshire Department of Education and Karen Hess, who is with the Center for Assessment, and really exciting work on creating the kindergarten through eighth grade competencies. So those competencies were done and created with input from our representative teachers. So we will be rolling the competencies out then, so teachers will start to be able to kind of play around with them. With competencies, when you roll them out, it's really hard to just say, here are the competencies, start using them. You have to play around with them and look at how it aligns with instruction and aligns with assessment. So this will give teachers a chance to kind of start to dig into competencies, so sort of a first look.
So when do you expect those to be rolled out?
So we will give them to teachers at the Literacy Institute, and, you know, really explain the connection between competencies and standards, and how they can be used in the unit design, really on the assessment side.
So they'll be starting to be implemented next year?
In the sense that the teachers will know what competencies align with which assessments, and it might be ongoing, you know, throughout the year.
So which standards go to which, under which competencies? And then have those aligned to the performance assessments?
Yes, yeah. All right. So really exciting work. And I was thrilled that we had that redistribution grant, because we were able to include everyone who was interested.
That's great.
So it's twenty-five teachers, you know, along with a few people who only can go a few days and they're in more support positions, like reading specialists and so on, so. And we are doing, we're planning that work right now, and what's really exciting, we know each grade level is in a slightly different place, so what we're doing is creating almost like a flow chart for each group to follow along, and to, and we're phasing the work. So it's kind of, here's phase one, look through this, and if you've completed all of this, then you go to phase two and to phase three. We'll be walking around and supporting and facilitating, but we thought that it would really kind of empower the groups to be able to have that direction and that support. So, the literacy coaches and I are working on that, so we're excited about that. The next piece is the Summer Science Curriculum Writing Institute, and this is work that Bethany is really leading and spearheading. So, to begin looking at the next generation science standards, Bethany has worked with teacher, science teachers, two or three times during late starts this year, just to start looking at those new standards and where are current units in science? What aligns to standards? What doesn't align? Where are our gaps and where are our overlaps? So Bethany did that work this year and included Mount Vernon teachers during the late start as well, which was really nice. So all fifth through eighth grade teachers had a chance to do that, so this is a natural next step. So teachers will see where those gaps are, look at what new units they might need to work on creating, and what units they might need to tweak or refine a little bit to make sure that it aligns to new standards. So right now, I have a commitment from ten teachers who are interested, which is a very strong number, because we're only talking science teachers. And then there are some additional Mount Vernon teachers as well who will be attending. And we've spread it out on purpose. We wanted three days for them to start beginning that work, but we know if they kind of have the three days to start flushing things out, they have the rest of the summer to start thinking about those units, maybe even adding to them, and then come back together in August just for one additional day to do some additional work or some more reflection or refinement that they might be ready for at that point. And that, again, will be funded through our Title II-A funds.
Great.
And then our math curriculum updates. We've been using, for a math curriculum, we've been using what's called more of a scope and sequence, where it lists the topic and the chapter, and then, Jen has been wonderful, and I think we shared an example at a board meeting with you, Jen's been wonderful about incorporating notes and important pieces, incorporating extra things that we need to do if there's misalignment between standards. But we haven't created more of like a unit plan document that actually says, you know, you're teaching fractions, and this is how, you know, these are the essential questions for the unit. This is what we want students to gain and have an understanding of by the end of the unit. So it's been more of like a sequential list rather than an outline of a unit overview. And sometimes when you have that sequential list, you feel like it's a punch list and you just have to get through it, where we feel like if we create units for the teachers, they might see fractions as, hey, I'm now tackling this next concept, and we're going to stick with this until we have mastery, and then let's go to the next one. So it's kind of shifting thinking a little bit, and really not doing anything new, but just kind of giving a different framework to teachers to be able to kind of understand that it's not just this sequential list, and maybe even being able to provide some more resources and so on to teachers in some of those areas.
That's quite a thinking shift, a cultural shift, as you said, because what I can see happening is the teacher gets towards the end of the year, and there's this big part of this curriculum that they didn't get to because they were interested in mastery versus as they went through the year, and they went, oh my goodness, and then the kids get slammed with all this stuff at the end of the year. If we're not careful with the, with the cultural thinking, it'd be norm, so that's going to be really difficult.
Yeah. And that sequential, yeah, the sequential list, though, did help for pacing, in a sense, because it did show the number of days, and we're not going to throw that out. We almost think it's, it's both.
Right.
Having the list and seeing, you know, how many days and keeping on track so that we don't get crunched at the end.
Right, because we want to avoid that.
Yes. At all costs. But also knowing it's not just getting through chapter one, then getting through chapter two, and getting through chapter three, it's teaching this concept, and what do we want students to know by the end of the year? And I think sometimes with that sequential list, it then turns into, we're teaching math in focus rather than we're teaching math. So when you have a document that shows you, you know, here are the concepts you're teaching to students, here are your resources, and some might be some resources we had from Mahesh, and some might be some resources from some of the exemplar training the teachers did. And having the exemplars right there and having everything in one place, I think will be really helpful for the teachers.
So I expect that our math coach has been heavily involved in this work?
Yes, yeah. So Jen and I have had, been having conversations all year about, you know, the need to kind of shift thinking a little bit, and that, it's been four years, it's time for us to, you know, what's the natural next step? And this really is a natural next step. You know, the first few years, it's, hey, here are the chapters, and we're really understanding the resource. We think now teachers are ready for this shift and this change.
Okay.
So we're, yeah, and we're anticipating really just one teacher per grade level and Jen's assistance.
Okay.
You know, we haven't, we've been focusing on literacy and science. The math is our next step to see where we have interest from, so, but we are excited about that, too. And again, our Title II-A funds will cover that. And then our full-day kindergarten work. So kindergarten is not included in the Literacy Institute, and the reason why is because we wanted to dedicate separate time to them to really provide more support. During the Literacy Institute, we're spread pretty thin. You know, I'll be facilitating grades one through four, Liz will be facilitating five through eight, and then high school, you know, Jeanne Sturgis is facilitating that group. But when we each have four grade levels to kind of support and oversee during the institute, if I added kindergarten, I think they'd get lost. And kindergarten is such an important year, we felt we needed to really dedicate separate time for them to do both the literacy work, but also really look at the curriculum as a whole and what that will look like in a full-day program. We did do a lot of work last summer to prepare for full day, to actually support Mount Vernon and what full day K would look like, but really to get a jumpstart on this year. So I feel like we are in good, good shape, but, you know, the other reason we wanted to wait until August is because we wanted to make sure we had the new hires and could actually bring them in at that point. So that was an important piece, to make sure that we did that.
But I do remember, you know, there was really a plan for how full day K was going to be phased in.
Yes.
So there was a lot of work that has already been done.
Yeah, yeah.
So, in terms of the student experience, so they don't dive right into, you know, this heavy-duty full day, it's really sort of more of a phasing-in process for them.
Yeah, that the beginning of kindergarten looks more like pre-K.
Right, right.
And then the middle chunk looks like kindergarten, and then the last And then the middle chunk looks like kindergarten and then the last looks more like first grade. So we did some work around that. We did a work around a daily schedule and what that might look like.
Yep.
And that's going to look different in every kindergarten classroom based on the specials and how those will, will look. But that work has all been done, which is really nice. We started some work around science and social studies in our literacy work, but the kindergarten teacher struggled a little bit last summer with fully rolling out brand new units because they felt like they're rolling out new units and they're only going to be hopefully doing it for a year and that's all it was. So we didn't dive as deeply into some of the literacy work last year. So I feel like this time is, yeah, really looking at our literacy units and our new literacy units and what literacy instruction will look like now that we do have a full day. And again, a lot, we talked a lot about how what we're adding to kindergarten is, you know, art and music and, you know, more of free time for structured play and things like that. So we have to refine those a little bit as well.
You know, I'm really glad you're doing this work. It's great the work the team does. It's just, I'm really looking forward, I'm excited to hear feedback from this time, from next year's, you know, the summer 2017 sessions to find out, okay, look back, okay, what worked, what didn't?
Right.
You know, what were our successes, what were things that we'd like to do different? That's really going to be interesting to find out what they come up with.
Yeah.
What, what happens this next year is going to be very exciting.
Almost like being a fly on the wall during that.
It's going to be really cool.
Yeah. And I'm excited too because we do have very good data from this year. You know, our NWA data as well as our social emotional screening tool that we used and we'll be collecting that data again next year. So not only will we have the teacher experience and teacher feedback, but we will have those data points as well, which is really exciting.
They, kindergarten first grade at least did a second set of NWA test, right?
And a, a third.
Wait, they did a third?
They're, they're doing it right now.
Oh, they are?
Actually, kindergarten this week is doing NWEA, yes. And I'm not sure if first grade did. I can't remember.
I asked my first grader.
Yeah, sure. I can't remember. I touched base with Meg today and we were talking about kindergarten NWA, but.
My kindergartner has very much enjoyed it this week.
Oh, really? The NWE testing? Yeah. They love being on computers.
Yeah.
And it's interesting, we've done it in small groups in Amherst, but in Mount Vernon, they did it whole class. And interestingly, they said the second the kids put the headphones on, they were in their own little worlds. They weren't distracted by each other. They sat and they did it and worked really hard. So it's really, really interesting.
And it takes less than an hour?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
15, 20 minutes.
Okay.
I mean, some chose to go longer.
Right.
But most 15 to 20 minutes. The kids are loving it. Like, listen, talking to some of the teachers about how the kids react during the testing, the kids love it. Especially the fact that they're being tested multiple times, it's a good thing for them because they're realizing, I know more now than I did at the beginning of the year when I took it.
You know, I was surprised too, our kindergarten teachers, you know, this was something that certainly they were part of the decision to use NWEA, but we didn't really have that many choices. We were already using it in the other grade levels. So it wasn't like we said to kindergarten, hey, these are your three different choices. It was, NWEA makes the most sense, are we comfortable with this? So there wasn't a lot of teacher choice in that and I was amazed, you know, we had just finished NWEA and I was chatting with kindergarten teachers and they said, started digging into my data already? And I was amazed because they had never received training on how to even access it, which is fairly easy. But we hadn't really even fully rolled it out to the teachers. They were already digging into their data and they were saying they were surprised by some of it. That some of it was, you know, that, that some students showed more mastery than they were showing in the classroom, you know, on NWEA. And then the opposite was true too. You know, so fascinating because it just gave a different perspective.
Yeah, for them to help inform their instruction.
Are we going to be able to see, you know, like, we've seen the fall ones?
Oh, yeah.
Well, as a parent, but also as a board. You know, we've seen the fall data, we keep going back to the fall data. Are we able, are you going to be able to show us the comparison?
Yeah, yeah, no, I definitely can. And I can roll out winter. One of the challenging things this year, and this is something we're going to be refining next year, so the NWEA data might look a little bit different. Traditionally, we've always tried to test earlier in the year and then it just gets pushed off and all of a sudden it's November when we're testing, which can impact our norms a little. It can actually increase our, our percentages because we're testing toward the end of that window. And for next year, NWEA can, will allow districts to actually customize and say, oh, this was the week we took it. So it's going to be more accurate, which will be interesting. We might see a little bit of a fluctuation there. So our, with our, our, our fall was late and then our winter was kind of in the middle. So there wasn't a lot of instructional time between. So we didn't see as much growth as we would have wanted to from fall to winter, but only because of when students were taking that assessment. But it would be really interesting, especially with kindergarten, to look at, you know, fall, winter, spring, because we'll have that NLP check on first grade too, to see. And then the last part is just additional committee work. Committee work is funded through the operating budget. We do budget through that program review line for this work, but the assessment, grading and reporting committee will be working. We'll be doing some book groups. I'm going to be pulling Tripod in. There's just no date for the end of the school year where all schools are available. I thought I found one, it was Wilkins Field Day. And I was like, oh, didn't find a date. So, but teachers certainly, there's always the crunch at the end of the year. I think they prefer to come in in the summer and reflect on Tripod and to share out with us their thoughts on implementation and a little bit of teacher leader effectiveness work. And then we would like to pull the professional development committee in this year to help us plan our in-service day in the beginning of the school year. So that committee work will happen too. So busy summer.
Very.
If you guys have any questions?
Well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I still don't know when she sleeps.
Right.
Because it's a pretty funny, I think.
And, and just on the assessment, grading and reporting, we did have, on a one meeting, and Beth and I are both on that committee. So we'll be looking for updates on that as we go forward, but we just had our initial meeting to, to start the work on that, so.
It was a good initial meeting though.
Yep.
It really was. Very kind of empowering in a way, you know, just to see how passionate people are about it.
Right. So I think we are at the end of our meeting. Future agenda items, Peter spoke to that already about the reception for new staff. So.
One thing I'd like to add, that if you can't make it next Thursday, but we're going to plan the summer as a four to seven o'clock one night to do some PD for board members. So you often hear like NWEA and PACE and you hear about, so everything in education is an acronym or an abbreviation. So, and board members need to have the tools to talk to the public. So we're going to do a short little PD experiment this summer with board members. If you want to come, we'll have food, we'll have a quick agenda to just kind of go over things, where to find stuff, that kind of thing. So we'll hear about that.
Do we have a date yet for that?